I'd like to call the November 21 regular city council meeting to order. And will Deputy Mayor Pennington please lead us in the pledge?
Let the leaders see to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, let the record show that all except for Councilmember Back are present tonight. Is there a motion to excuse?
So moved.
Second.
Motion was made by Councilmember Bangs, seconded by Councilmember Nutting. All those in favor, please raise your right hand and say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Is there any correspondence tonight?
There are no correspondence, Mayor.
Thank you very much. Well, council, tonight's a really special night. We have a lot of people here because we want to recognize some community members. And so, I'm just going to jump right into that. I think we've set the program up in such a way that you'll all, will all be involved and will, it's been a little while since we've done this, so we might be a little rusty, but we're going to give it our best. So, these are the Spirit of Des Moines awards and the council several years ago put forward policy to recognize individuals and groups and businesses that contribute greatly to the city of Des Moines. And so, we do it every two years and so, we are covering both the years 2017 and 2018. I know we're almost at the end of 2019. We're running as fast as we can. So, with that, I'll start with a 2017 annual award. And I'll read it from the podium. At this point, I'd like to call up Sheila Brush.
Thank you.
Sheila, you exhibit a unique combination of attributes and support of this community. You're not only extremely intelligent, but the quality that you employ in researching issues and exhibiting the passion for the well-being of the community is outstanding. In Sheila's role as the president of Quiet Skies, she has continually, continued to support the efforts and strategies to address the negative impacts of, that we experience from Sea-Tac Airport. We have the good fortune in this city to have Sheila to participate on our aviation advisory committee, and she's also served as a community representative to start. We're grateful for your service and in this regard, as we move forward, we, as, I'm sorry, we are grateful for her service and in this regard, as we move forward and try to build on her other efforts. Sheila is the recipient of the Spirit of Des Moines Award for 2017.
Thank you. That's beautiful. I didn't expect something so lovely.
Well, here it is, and it just reads the Spirit of Des Moines Award to Sheila Brush. And there's a city pin, if you will allow me.
Absolutely.
Okay. And please don't yell.
Ouch.
Would you care to say anything?
Yeah, just a few words. It's unfortunate Michael's not here because I would thank him. What I learned through this process is a great deal of knowledge and the importance of building relationships both locally, which I have here, and I'm fortunate also to work with other people across the nation that are experiencing the same types of impacts. And what I realized in gaining this knowledge, that I now have a responsibility. And that responsibility is towards our city and especially our kids, that we properly mitigate these impacts and that we keep our city as healthy and as beautiful and as intact as, as allowed as our times progress in life. So, I want to thank you very much because it's been a pleasure to work together. We respectfully agree to disagree a lot, but we always, at the end of days, support each other. So, I want to thank you all because it's been a bumpy flight. You're going to be doing that a lot tonight.
Yes.
There you are.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Thank you. Thank you all.
Thank you.
No, I've got this one. No, I've got this right here. Okay, and for our next award, it's the 2017 Another Annual Award. We have Councilmember Matt Mahoney that will read this one.
Good evening, everybody. Well, we get to recognize one of my favorite people in the city, Tony Hettler. Come on up. There you go. I got to say some nice things about you, so hold on for a second, all right?
I'm just here to keep them in check.
Yeah, they limited me. You can see that.
Seventy-five words.
Yeah. One of the great characteristics of Tony is that he is literally a friend to all. He always has time for discussion about things he's passionate about, including youth sports and the well-being of our city. No one has exemplified community engagement more than Tony. Tony coordinates volunteers, vendors, coaches, youth sports, and develops young professionals. Tony has been the chair of the Destination Des Moines for several years. Under his leadership, Destination Des Moines has successfully brought back the Waterloo Festival, the Fourth of July fireworks, and many other community events. Tony Hettler is a recipient of the Spirit of Des Moines Award, Annual Award for 2017. Congratulations.
I've got a pin right here.
You got one?
Yeah.
What's this really mean?
Now you're committed.
He's going to prom, folks.
There you go. Congratulations, man.
Thank you very much for this award and this recognition. And this is not just for me, but for our entire DDM group, every one of you that comes out and supports us. We can't do it without the support of the council, the staff, and all the departments in the city. It's quite an undertaking and I want to thank my board members because we're, I always like to say, we're a small band of people who do some really big things, and I want to thank you. And I have one thing here tonight I want to pass on to Mayor Pina. We do cooperate quite a bit. We do a lot of things together. It's been, we'll be beginning our 10th year with DDM, and we've grown each and every year. And our goal is to bring quality and a great number of events, but most important is to bring the smiles to every little face that's in this room. And so, with that, it takes a lot of work, a lot of money, and a lot of cooperation. And one of the things we're able to do is to solicit funds to pay for our bad habits of blowing things up. And one of those, one of our sponsors provides us with enough revenues so that we can reimburse the city for all the things they do for the community. And because they're, without the help of the city, we couldn't put on these events. So, thank you very much.
Okay, so.
Oh, the photo. Yep.
Somebody had to take a minute, check their fit, that, see what our foot count is when we start. Okay, we're next to our, our next, we have another 2017 Annual Award, and it'll be read by Councilmember Bangs.
Well, I want to really say that these words are really felt from the heart. And I think all the words that everyone's going to be saying tonight are actually felt from the heart because of all the work that businesses and individuals in our city do. Bill and Patty Linska, can you come up? You're both well-known in Des Moines, especially around the Des Moines Marina. There, you are active in the Des Moines Marina Tenant Association and often seen at the farmer's market and at many community events. The contribution made by you as this couple in this city have provided a contribution to the city in terms of understanding issues in and around the Marina and Marina District. They, you've partnered with the city council and administration in positive ways to help enhance communication and you don't, you just don't lay down on that one. You are relentless and we appreciate that. You are involved in the Des Moines Yacht Club, and Bill, you're currently serving on the police advisory board, of which I am the liaison, and you bring some great stuff to that board. So, Bill and Patty, you're recipients of the Spirit of Des Moines Award for 2017. Oh, you've got a little thing in your car. I thought they were out of style.
So am I.
No, no, Patty keeps you in style.
Hey, the only thing I'd like to say, it's a great place to be in the neighborhood, and I, we both believe in having an informed and engaged community. And the only way you can do that is just keep talking, keep sharing, and, you know, get people out there informed so that they can participate. So, thank you all who we've been working with throughout the years, and it's a pleasure to see everybody here tonight. Thanks.
Thank you.
Our next 2017 Annual Award will be read by Councilmember Tracy Buxton.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm kind of excited to do this one. I was here during my campaign coming to a lot of council members, and I had the great privilege of listening to this young woman present quite often. The next recipient is a former student and graduate of Mount Rainier High School. She served two terms as ASB class president. Under her leadership, the city received regular updates from the student body and a partnership between the student government and the city government developed. She also championed for a longstanding school goal to rename 19th Avenue to Rainier Drive. Working cooperatively, we were able to find a solution to this goal and commemoratively rename that portion of 19th Avenue Rainier Drive South. Since graduation, Sophie has moved to Seoul, South Korea to pursue her education. Sophie Rock is a recipient of the 2017 Annual Spirit of Des Moines Awards, and I am pleased to call her parents Lori and Keith up to accept this award on Lori's behalf.
So, you have got to be so proud. Oh, my gosh. Congratulations. And we have a couple of pins.
Okay.
If you, you know.
Hand them to her if you want to.
Well, here. As the parents, you should be.
Exactly. That's how I feel.
Thank you.
Yeah, exactly. And then we'll give you one that you can give to her.
She was so sad that she couldn't be here tonight, and so, she's studying hard. You guys were a part of her flight path out of the area and up to UBC and now Seoul, South Korea. So, she's loving life and studying hard. So, I know she'll be sad to have missed it, but we'll have her watch it online.
Yes, well, we'll take a picture and we can wave.
A photograph?
Sure. Absolutely.
Okay, we are now looking at the 2018 Annual Award, and we have Deputy Mayor Vic Pennington to give this one out. Vince, would you join me up here, please? Vince Thing and Logan. So Vince is a volunteer coordinator for Destination Des Moines, and he reaches out and works with hundreds of volunteers. And, and he brings these volunteers in, into the organization and he creates a really great environment for volunteers. And, and then, when he's done, with all the people he's met, he plugs them into the city and into the city of Des Moines, and they continue to work and volunteer, and we really get some great folks by doing that. Vince is also a trustee for the North Hill Community Club, and he's, I'm told, and I know, because I've had the opportunity to visit with him, but he, he's always there. He's one of those neighbors that you can rely on. So, that's, that's really cool. That's cool. Your dad's, he's rocking it. Vince is the 2018 recipient of the Spirit of Des Moines Award. So, here you go. So, we're going to, we're going to pin you. All right. Oh, we'll see if that. Okay, so there's that. And Logan, there's one for you. And we'll put that right there.
I'll just say a couple of things. Just real quick, I want to really always thank the volunteers. It takes, it makes it so much easier when there are more of us helping, and so, thank you. And, and if you haven't volunteered recently, please do it. And I'll say one last thing in the wise words of Mayor Pina. It, his wife has been an incredible source of support and makes it all possible. So, the reason that I can be out there and organizing the volunteers is because my beautiful wife, Michelle, is there to help me.
Yes, it is. Our next 2018 Annual Award will be read by Councilmember Nutting.
Mark Olson, could you please join me up here? Mark Olson does a lot of the hard work behind the scenes and asks for no credit or recognitions. Greeting new business and plugging them into the community, always from the, from start to finish during events, Mark takes the servitude role to ensure community members enjoy the events. Music in the park, Fourth of July, parade, art and wine walks, et cetera. No, it's not uncommon to see Mark late in the, late in the night cleaning up despite the fact that he started early in the morning setting up. And he's pretty much, can be seen serving everybody their libations as well, most of the time. So, Mark, congratulations for the 2018 Annual Spirit of Des Moines Award.
Thank you. I'll just say, I'll say a couple of things. I am so fortunate to be part of this community. You know, it's like my family, you know? I sold my house in Marion four years ago. I moved to Des Moines, and now I've moved on. I live in Shelton now, but I'm still part of DDM. I'm the vice president. I'm not going anywhere. I drive back and forth, but if you want to keep me, I want to be here, and I'll do whatever I can to help you out. Thank you very much.
Okay for a photo?
Yep. Okay. Okay. Thanks, sir.
Thank you.
I have the first of our lifetime awards to give out tonight, and I'd like to call Susan Wayne Corey to the podium, please. This is a tough one. Susan and Wayne are irreplaceable members of our community, selflessly supporting many activities to build a better Des Moines. The Des Moines Farmer's Market would not exist without them. Wayne was there at the beginning and was the catalyst for what it's grown into, providing leadership, encouraging donations, donations and resources and bringing in resources to make it happen. Despite whatever challenge was faced, their good humor and positive attitude are inspiring. Susan currently volunteers her time at the police station doing whatever is needed to help. And I'm going to go off here and just say, that's, I think that is somewhere in your DNA, whatever it is to help. You're two of the most wonderful giving people, and we are so blessed to have you. So, it is my sincere pleasure to give the Spirit of Des Moines Lifetime Award to Susan and Wayne Corey.
Well, I just want to say what a privilege it's been to work in this wonderful community and with all of you. And I think we'll take a rest now.
I would like to say the same thing. We moved here 25 years ago and realized the city, its size, needed a lot of help. When things get done, you just call volunteers. And we've been fortunate, worked with a lot of them, good community people, good city people, and thank you very much. And this has passed my bedtime, my friend.
Can I keep you up for a few minutes to have, to take a picture?
Yeah.
Come on up front. Yes, you can. Thank you all. We have another lifetime award, and Councilmember Mahoney, come present it.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to invite up Ken and Catherine Carboni Rogers. Come on up. I got a few words here, but they're not gonna do it justice. I'm just gonna put it that way before I get started. Ken and Catherine are active community leaders. Ken is president of Des Moines Marina Association and Catherine represents her connection to the High Line School District. They're the owners of the Corridor Deck, and if you haven't been there, shame on you, by the way, representing a belief in what our marina and city will be in the future. Both, um, Ken and Catherine have served in, on the Rotary. It is my pleasure, uh, they've done so much more, that's, this is just a short list. It is my pleasure to present the Spirit of Des Moines Lifetime Award to Ken and Catherine Carboni Rogers.
We have to do some pinning before, you can't say words without pinning, Susan. All right? Do it here, only hold that one front. Okay? I'll do you first.
Did not well, not, didn't draw much blood.
All right. Give me a little... So, just to kinda tag on to what Wayne and, and Vince had to say, it, stuff doesn't get done around here unless people volunteer to do it. And I guess that's kinda the definition of a community, people that are willing to do things that don't necessarily benefit them directly in hopes that it'll help make everybody's life a little better or improve it for the future in ways that you may not even know or recognize. We moved here about the same time Wayne did, um, almost 30 years ago. We're first generation Des Moinesers and, whatever that is. And, but we've raised our kids here and they've gone to the, the local schools and now they're, have finished college and they're out hopefully contributing in their own way. But it's a very special community and it's more special as a function of all the people that we've been able to meet and work with over these almost 30 years. And from our perspective, at least from what we're doing right now, I have to take this chance to thank the staff of the city, especially the marina staff, for their outstanding effort and help in, in getting us to be able to execute our vision of what we think might be possible in the marina. Wouldn't have happened without the Harbor Master's support, Joe and Scott, and all the staff that, that work for them. Certainly none of that happens without the support of the City Council and the rest of the staff, for sure, but I just wanted to take an opportunity to thank them specifically because it, without that, it would not have happened. So we hope that whatever we're doing is a little bit of a catalyst to help others that might be reluctant to step up. It takes time, it takes effort, and it takes energy, but I can promise you it's worth it, especially in this community. So thanks all very much.
My husband would never, um, would never expect me to pass up an opportunity in front of a microphone, so I'm not gonna disappoint him. Um, I just wanted to add on and say that, um, when we stumbled on the house, the home that we still live in 28 years ago, we could not have imagined how much a part of our lives this community would become and how much a part of this community we would become. And our kids who are in their, um, mid twenties now will always think of Des Moines as home. And, um, and to be named in the company with, with Wayne and Susan Corey is truly humbling. So we deeply appreciate this award. Thank you. Go Cougs!
Our next award is an Outstanding Organization Award, and Councilmember Nutting will read that one.
So I can do this one of two ways. I can call Joel up here, or I can call the whole troop. So, do y'all wanna join me, or does Joel just wanna join me?
The whole, or the whole troop?
Let's go.
Yeah.
This Boy Scout Troop 307 actively seeks out opportunities for the community service and builds, I'm sorry, builders of the, and they're the builders of the Barnes Creek Trail. Boy Scout Troop 307 provides an opportunity for our young residents to learn respect and service to their community. We enjoy our relationship with them and are honored to have helped serve, honored to have helped serve them, of them become Eagle Scouts.
Several of them.
Several, I'm sorry, several of them, um, to become Eagle Scouts as they've worked to get the Barnes Creek Trail completed. So, Troop 307 and Joel?
Yep.
We'd like to present to you the Spirit of Des Moines, um, Community Achievement.
Wonderful, wonderful.
I'm actually, I'm actually just the assistant, assistant scoutmaster. So David, would you like to say something on behalf of the troop?
Um, both on behalf of the troop and on behalf of scouting, we wanted to thank the, uh, all the members that we worked with, uh, through the planning and the preparation and the construction of the, the trail. Um, it was a great opportunity. Six of our boys took on, uh, service projects. Uh, we have two of the Eagle Scouts that are here now, two are in the military and two are off at university. Um, but we're all grateful for the opportunity to, um, like they're talking about, build, build character through scouting. It's still one of the best opportunities there are to build character in youth and life skills. And the opportunity they had to plan and organize it as well as do the work and supervise and that. And again, we wanted to thank all the, uh, the people that we worked with throughout the city who helped to make that happen. Thank you.
Let's go, let's line up. read it.
Thank you, Mayor. Suzie, this one's for you. Where did she, where, there she is. Come on up and join me. Auntie Irene's was once a house across the street from the theater on the Fisher Lot. They sold coffee and candy and as the coffee business grew, they moved over to their current location. There have been a few owners, but Suzie Horton, the current owner, has elevated the business to the next level. She runs a great business and mentors young people and helps them understand that they're the face of the business. It's my honor to present Suzie Horton, the Spirit of Des Moines Outstanding Organization. Is that okay?
Yes.
All right.
It was on sale.
Oh. Can I ask her if it was okay to pin it, 'cause I love this jacket. I wanted to hug her a few times.
She wanted to pet me.
Yeah, I know. So beautiful. It's really soft. Thank you. There we go. All right.
Suzie, would you like to say a few words?
Oh, my goodness. Uh, when I moved to this community 32 years ago and, I do, and raised our kids here, never in a million years would I dream that I would one day own Auntie Irene's. And the absolute joy that would bring me and the lives I get to touch every single day and the people that I get to meet as well that come into the shop to see its growth. Um, five and a half years later, I still can't wait to get there in the mornings. And, uh, I, Lord willing, I stay healthy. I'm, I hope to own it for a, a long time and maybe my granddaughter Cora can work there someday and see what a nag her grandma is. So, thank you.
You wanna bring your family up for us?
Family, come on. They're inviting you. They have you now. No, that was my mom voice.
Mayor Pennington.
Okay. Elsie 76 Station, anybody here from there? Where, where we at? Elsie family? Okay, they're not here, so I'll, I'll read it anyway. We'll, we'll make sure that they, they get it next time we fill up our tank. Elsie 76 Station. This family-owned business has operated Des Moines for over 50 years, providing a stable stability and longevity. It is an automotive service station meeting the automotive needs of the community. I'm very proud to award them with the Spirit of Des Moines Organization Award. It's my pleasure to present this to the Elsie family with the Spirit of Des Moines Outstanding Organization. So, give them a big hand. We will, we'll make sure it gets down there and when we fill up our tank, and I remember when it was, gas was almost free when I used to fill it up, but, anyway.
Our next outstanding organization award is, uh, will be handled by Councilmember Louisa Banks.
So John L. Scott Des Moines, the employees of John L. Scott Des Moines consistently give to our community through their time and donations. They make events possible by planning, promoting, staffing events, and inspiring others to help. They are active in the Waterland Festival, Wine and Arts Walk, Trick or Treat Path, Tree Lighting, to name just a few. The individuals who participated in the 2018 events are Vince Thing, Christie Dunn, Rebecca King, Sandra Mock, Olga Drayton, Tony Hettler, sorry, um, and Brandy, and Brandy Fisher. I'd like to call Tony Hettler up to receive this award, uh, the Spirit of Des Moines Outstanding Organization Award.
Uh, this is a nice honor for our, uh, our team, John L. Scott. This, uh, happens to be the 25th year that we've been in Des Moines as a company. Uh, and so it's, it's been really fun over the years and we, as many of you that who volunteer, we started, uh, small and we just kept going. And, uh, again, with a lot of support from the community, uh, staff, and from every department in this, uh, city and you, each and every one of you, uh, we have a joy doing what we do. So thank you very much.
I know Vince is here.
You got Vince.
Yeah, Vince.
Alright, go and get a shot, man.
I have pins for everyone though, Tony, if you wanna.
Okay. Okay, let's, uh, let's go get a shot. The next one will be presented by Councilmember Tracy Buxton.
Thank you, Mayor. I am so glad I was assigned to this organization. So I'll read first and then I have a story. So Dan and Cindy Johnson, who I don't see here, I've been looking around, so I don't think they're here. Pardon? Oh, okay. Yeah. Um, so they've been a mainstay of the community since 1986 and they're owners of the Print Place. They participate in a number of community organizations and events. As owners of the Print Place, Dan and Cindy often provide printing services to various charitable organizations and community events at no charge or cost, but insist no recognition in return. Ha ha. We are pleased that they chose Des Moines for their place of business and we appreciate their service to the community. So we are honored to present the Spirit of Des Moines Outstanding Organization Award to the Print Place and Dan and Cindy. So I'm just gonna, hi, Dan and Cindy. So I wanted to say, so I've known Dan especially for a long time, you know, over 25 years. We have, we ran a, um, apartment complex back in the eighties and would always go down there for our printing. And when I had my first child in 1994, uh, during those, we'd always pack him along down there with us whenever we needed to get something done. And when Cody could, started to walk and could talk, um, he liked, he liked Junior mints. And so Dan installed a Junior Mint dispensing machine in the Print Place just for Cody. Oh gosh, I can almost cry. He is the most generous, big-hearted man. And then Cindy, she's such a darling. Anyway, can you believe that? And he's still like that, so. And he's still like that, so.
Our final organizational award tonight, again, the, the business wasn't able to be here, but the recipient is the Greenside Organization. The inspiring attribute of Greenside has been to the degree with which they have exhibited strong commitment to being a great corporate citizen in Des Moines. One great example is the manner in which they provide security to their premises and work closely with the city police department to assure the safety of their customers and anyone in, within the area of their business. Their business has contributed not only to the city, not only as a retail outlet, but as a community citizen and contributor to our community events. Their staff can often be seen helping at the farmer's market and other events. They sponsor the Fourth of July fireworks and are responsible for helping with the cleanup of illicit activity along Pacific Highway. We are pleased to award Greenside the Spirit of Des Moines Outstanding Organization Award. Again, we will see that they get this award. Okay, well, that takes us to the end of the 2017-2018 awards. And, you know, at this point, I want to thank everybody for coming and partaking in this. I think, Council, it might be a good idea to take a ten-minute break. Then there's cookies. So, with that, let's take a ten-minute break and we'll come back to just a little after eight o'clock.
Okay, I'll bring us back. Hard to come off something like that. It's such a good feeling. We're really fortunate to have such great people. So, at this time, it takes us to comments from the public. And when I call your name, if you've signed up to speak, please come to the podium and state your name and the city in which you live, and you'll have three minutes. And our first speaker is Mr. J.C. Harris.
Good evening. It would have been better if the council had considered Resolution 19-113, I think it is, after the first of the year. It would have been more courteous, for one thing, considering so much of it concerns stuff to do with a new council which will be seated. It appears to me from the comments that were made from the dais, which by the way, that was the longest single discussion in over three years of meetings that I've attended, and that's telling. But I feel like there was a message that was being sent, and I will tell you that I hear your message. But to the resolution itself, it has twelve items, and what I would say is that about half of them are unnecessary, redundant, things that ironically could be handled simply by talking to one another as human beings. And I was gonna say, hey, you know, please don't vote for this thing, but then I realized how much staff time has gone into this. Dozens upon dozens of hours, I'm sure, and these are well-paid people who work for the city. They work hard. So that's a heck of a lot of money and time that could have been spent, and I'm not trying to be pious here, but that could have been spent working on real problems for the residents and not this kind of Robert's Rules of Order stuff. And that disturbs me, that such a lengthy discussion and such lengthy work product is being expended on something that is just so trivial in the overall scope of the work that needs to be done in this city. So I would just ask that at least one of you vote this thing down, just to show that you know what a waste it is. And, but pass it, because I will tell you that the one thing I do not want is for the staff to spend one more minute of time on this thing. It's just not worth it. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else? No one else has signed up? Is there anyone else who wishes to speak to the council? Okay, seeing no one approach. Move forward to board and committee reports, and we will start with Deputy Mayor Pennington.
No committee reports, but it was a wonderful evening, and thank you for the folks that are still here, and congratulations, and thanks for all you do. And Sheila, looking at you, there's been quite a journey, and this is a really cool summation of that journey. So thanks, and thank you all. So anyway, that's it, all I got to say.
Okay, Councilmember Mahoney.
Thank you, Mayor. Just following up on Squidorama. It was a great experience. We released the squid. Had a full face mask, lots of kids there. You guys were there, and you guys were there. It was, it was, it was quite an adventure and a very interesting event. I highly recommend you try to attend it next year. It happens every, I think it's the third Saturday in November. Couple of things I attended. I attended the skateboard meeting, and I also attended the Transportation Commission meeting. And one thing, I, there's a deck that's in your box, but I want to talk, so P, talk about it a little bit. PSRC had their regional baseline study, and they discussed passenger and cargo demands to 2050. And it was very interesting. Here's a couple of facts that I wrote down just at a high level. They expect a forty-three percent growth in population in our region by 2050. Air cargo will more than double from the 2018 total of five hundred fifty, fifty-two metric tons to one point three million metric tons for 2050. And they used the term "implantments," basically people getting on a plane, but they essentially said, we double it because it's, that's how the port does their passengers or something. It's relatively close, I'll give it that. But they said twenty-four million in 2018. They expect by 2015 to be somewhere between forty-nine point three million and fifteen, five point nine million in 2050. This is another airport's worth of flights. Equivalent, this right now would be equivalent to what Atlanta has today with over twelve thousand acres. So five times the size we have. According to P, P, PSRC, in 2027, C-TAC, even with its short and long-term projects with the SAMP, will be beyond capacity. So eight years away. PSRC believes we should be compared to Miami, which surprised me, and the reason why they said that is it has three airports. It has water. It serves diverse counties and populous, both north and south of its center. It was very interesting as, as being an analogy, and like I said, they're served by three airports. PSRC reiterated the need for a second airport, but didn't suggest where one would be located. Obviously, that's gonna be decided hopefully by this committee. But they did, if they said, when the second airport comes in, one of the things they put in mind is include transit in that. One of the big things, you build it, they will come. Well, if they can't get there, it just creates more of the problem we already have today. Josh Brown came over and spoke to me personally, and he asked, he offered an invitation maybe to come at the beginning of next year to give the presentation. There's an interactive piece of this where they show flights over one hour. It's done in a few seconds, but it's quite impressive. So I think we, as a council, we should ask him to come. It's just my recommendation. In addition, at, so moving on to the Transportation Committee, Commission meeting, I went on behalf of the City of Des Moines. Craig Stone has done a great job with the Gateway Projects, both the 167 and the 509. And of course, now with the complications of 976, they're trying to find out what's important and what's not. So I, I spoke on our behalf, that my attitude was, we've already got a good portion of it funded. Let's find a way to get it all done and not leave it, you know, hanging. But it, it went well. You could tell that they saw the logic in both projects and could see the intricacies and unprecedented cooperation between all types of agencies. So anyway, that's kinda where I'm at. I'll let somebody else talk about SR3. Bye.
Thank you. Oh, okay. These, these are not telephones. Anyway, are we supposed to say goodbye too? Anyway, Councilmember Banks.
Thank you, Mayor. I did attend the Squidorama, and I was honored to present, along with the Arts Commission, the awards to the three first-grade prize winners and for their wonderful art rendition of squid. And so the first prize winner will have their artwork as the poster for next year. And there were between three hundred and fifty and four hundred in attendance, so it was very well attended. On November the nineteenth, my second meeting with Department of Corrections, Rochelle Sims, our DV advocate, was there with me. I'm gonna talk to you about this later, Mayor, but I think this is gonna be really important for us to make sure that we're at the table consistently. There are four counties that are under review for fifty beds each for this work release program, Shalan, Snohomish, King County, and Pierce. These counties were selected because due to their status as underserved and unserved areas based on court sentencing and prison release records and data. So they're looking for facilities where they can house work release persons. But as of June 2019, there's one thousand one hundred and eighty-eight male and two hundred and sixteen female incarcerated individuals who have been screened and approved for work training release. So it's not willy-nilly or random. I mean, it's done in a very methodical way, and they have to be deserving of this work release. Now, what disturbs me is that invitations went out to many cities in King County to participate on this committee. And there's a Citizens Advisory Committee that they're establishing, and on that committee, we need to have not just citizens and electeds, but we need businesses, and we also need others who can provide services on this committee, and this committee was not very well represented. I was pretty upset. But I think maybe there's a way we can influence some cities to get more involved with this. It's gonna be important because this focuses on reentry, transition, and stabilization. And so it's gonna take all of that to bring, and, and nobody's saying it's coming to Des Moines. What we're saying is we need citizens on that advisory committee to make sure that they can be actively engaged in this process and know exactly what's going down the pipeline. That concludes my report.
Thank you. Councilmember Nanning.
I, I attended the SR3 community meeting last night down at the Beach Park Auditorium. It was fairly well-attended. I think there was about fifty-plus people down there, and a lot of questions asked. I think a lot of questions answered. Some people walked into it feeling that they got more information or, and are okay with it. Others still would like more information and would like things to have been done a little differently. But otherwise, I thought it was a pretty decent meeting, and that's about it, is my remarks.
Thank you. Councilmember Buxton.
Thank you, Mayor. On Monday, I attended the farmer's market meeting and just went over the successes of the market for the year and our holiday market. But I think the biggest thing that came out is there's still positions open to, on the board for the farmer's market and for volunteers. And really, I feel, I think pretty much every board and commission in the city could use more volunteers. If people want to, anybody watching, if anybody really wants to get involved in this community, human services, senior services, farmer's market, kids programs, there's a lot of opportunities to get involved as a volunteer in our community. So I think that's all I have tonight, Mayor. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. It's been a fairly busy week for me, and I started, started primarily on Tuesday. There was a joint aviation, joint city aviation meeting. And it was, it was held in, in our city at the dining hall. I think it was a good discussion. I wasn't at the first one, so I have no recollection as to how that worked. But I think the advantage of me having modestly new eyes, at least at, at this, at this meeting, was that there were some things that came forward that were pretty evident. And when they were put on the table, I think, along with a number of other suggestions, there was not only a list of, of items that, for consideration to improve getting the, the cities together and being more solid on their position, but there was even some structural suggestions. And I don't want to go into detail from them at the, at the dais at this time, but I think they, they will be coming forward in the near future. And I think, I think our representatives did an excellent job at helping move, move the process forward. And then the following day started with the Highline Forum. And again, that was hosted here in Des Moines. And we had a reasonable turnout. The, we, we had our, our city attorney sit in for our city manager at that meeting, and he did a presentation on the city that was met in a very positive way, but I think was outstanding. So kudos to you, and thank you very much. He, he put together, he had about a thirty-slide deck, because the hosting city always does a, a presentation on things that are going on in their area. And again, there were a number of things on the agenda that were talked about. There were some very meaningful public comments. And if I'm being vague, there, the, most, most of the comments are dealing around, about, are dealing with, of course, aviation, particulate matter studies, and a variety of things. But because of the meeting the night before, and many of these concepts are being folded into that, and that will be coming forward to the council, I didn't, I don't want to just put it out there in a, in a non-structured format. So it will be coming in the, in the near future. But the start-up date, they, they did talk about the ground noise study, trying to find ways to voluntarily minimize the third runway use at night, you know, encouraging smaller planes if, if, if a flight did have to go off. There was something I learned about an A320. Apparently, there's a fuel vent on the bottom of the wing, and on landing, it whistles. And so, yeah, who knew? So I guess being in the Northwest and around Boeing planes all the time, I don't know what the weaknesses are of the A320. But they are encouraging the carriers to, there's a little adaptation you can put over it that will, that will prevent that whistle. And it will make for, you know, quieter landings. These are all voluntary. I think there's differing opinion on, on progress. And, but I think, I, I do feel that the people that, it, it's very important to have the citizens involved that are passionate about it and are doing the research and are there around the table. That was evident to me. But it also is important that we find a way that I think electeds do come in to get involved. And I'm not exactly sure what that looks like. Mr. Larry Kreip brought in a document that is actually, it is an FAA document as to how these committees should function. And it's twelve pages, and as I'm looking through it, I'm going, why wouldn't this be the way that we operate? Well, that's almost a, that's an interesting question, because I know why they're not doing it, but the fact is that this is what we should be doing. And so, anyway, it was, I, I felt it was strong conversation. I think some suggested changes are gonna come forward, and, and I'm looking forward to receiving those. And, and that way, we can have a, a great dialogue about that. So I don't know exactly how soon those will be coming, but I, I, I'm led to believe it's before the end of the year. And then I had the pleasure of attending with many of you the SR3 discussion. And I think the folks from, we're, we reference it as SR3. It is an animal rescue site that is going in on our Marina floor on the south end. It's in the, in there, there's a little parking cut out by, what do they call that park? By the Sculpture Park. And they are highly regulated and dealing with sick animals. And I can definitely understand the concern that people have, and I'm glad that they came to express it. We spent a good couple hours going around the room, listening to questions. And it wasn't just us responding to them. The, the folks from SR3 were, you know, clearly trying to help people understand their concerns about noise, but one of the things that people oftentimes don't remember is that when your animals are sick, they tend to be quiet. Noises are their social connections, forms of communication. But a sick animal, it's not advantageous for them to be noisy, because when you're out in the wild, that's a sign of weakness. Weakness in the wild doesn't generally be, isn't generally met with good results. They've, they've, they have processes to treat the water, treat, they have a great security program in mind and so forth. But I, and I, and what was really, I thought, something to noteworthy about that whole conversation is that they really are working through all the layers to make sure that they are of minimal impact. But it makes tremendous sense that they are so close to being able to put these animals back in the water and, and return them to their natural habitat. They don't want them to develop connections with humans, because when they're in the wild, they don't want them swimming up to their boats. They want them to live a natural life. They showed photographs of, there was a sea lion that had swam through one of those, it's a, like a fiber ribbon that holds a box together for shipping. And it must have just been discarded, but it was, it wasn't cut. And so the sea lion swam through it at one point and got it around its neck. And as the sea lion grows, it's just gonna choke it out. And so there are things like that that they deal with as well. The, the largest animal they think they will have there is up to fifteen feet, but not all of their pools support that. And the maximum number of animals they can have at any one time, I believe, is twelve, she said. So they really thought this through, and, you know, it is an educational draw. Our folks at the Mast spoke up and helped people understand more about it. We had some divers from the, I believe, Seattle Aquarium that talked about, you know, I can understand you being concerned, but you, you can be ten feet away from these tanks and you can't, you wouldn't, you, they, you may not even know they're there because they may not be moving. They're healing. So anyway, I'm looking forward to it. They did say that their first facility comes in on November twenty-third, but they will not be operational until, I think, the end of March 2020. So it's, it was great dialogue, though. I think, I think the, the room expressed their view, and I think we did our best to answer it. And I think all the other comments about- And I think all the other comments about, yeah, everybody wishes we could have run things differently. I think in some cases, people just didn't understand that when someone finds a location and the zoning fits their acceptable use, once that project is vested or committed, it is a, that's it. There's not a policy decision. So, anyway, glad the community came out and spent some time with us, and glad we got a chance to exchange some thoughts. And when it was all said and done, there were points of contact provided by both, not just the city, but also SR3. They want to be a good neighbor and connect with the community, so. Really happy about that. I think it was very beneficial. So with that, I will go to our administration, our administration report.
Mayor, I have nothing to report. And that concludes the report.
Okay, now, I think that is probably the quickest report we ever have. So with that, I will go forward to our consent calendar, and will our clerk please read the consent calendar?
Item one, second reading, city council rules of procedure updates. And that concludes the consent calendar, Mayor.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve the consent calendar?
So moved.
Second.
Motion was made by Councilmember Bangs, seconded by Councilmember Buxton. Any discussion?
I'd like to say a few things. One, I believe the council rules give us the guidelines that we need. Yes, it's amongst human beings who treat each other with respect, but it gives guidelines that are necessary. I think it holds us all to the same level. Heard a couple comments, in particular, the drug and alcohol, one specifically targeted towards individuals and so forth, and I didn't necessarily agree with those. I look at it as simply this, we hold our city employees to that level, and we should hold ourselves accountable to it. I don't need this, per se, to be here, be sober, be diligent, but it's a worthy rule to be added. As far as time issues, I'm never going to have an issue. The idea, I think, is to be concise and have pertinent thought. Open discussion and interaction is part of it, and, you know, I think, I think whether it's five minutes, four minutes, 10 minutes, it doesn't really matter, as long as it's not a ramble. And then the third one I have is on, or the third comment was, one of the things I really like, and I think that all council members will like as we go forward, is the council member's idea piece. Before, we didn't have a venue to kind of figure out something we want to do in the community, in the city, and we've championed with other people in the community. To pencil it out in ideas, informative thought, and estimate some cost, and talk about the organizations that might participate, give a vision of it, and then that either gets reprimanded to committee or brought before the council for approval, the budgetary type of piece that would be included into it. What it is is a great step that was missing before. We had this discussion on our April 8 meeting of this year, and it was just, we knew we were going to come to the point of this year at the end, where we've been modifying and suggesting that a lot of these changes. And the last one, I agree, Mayor, you do a lot. And I think, not that the deputy mayor doesn't do a lot, I'm going to say that before I say this statement, but the fact that the Spirit Award, the Spirit of Des Moines Awards being shifted to the deputy mayor is a good move. I think it's a balance, a lot of times, with the responsibility. So those are just my comments about this list here.
Okay. Anyone else? Okay. All in favor? Please raise your right hand and say aye.
Aye.
Okay, passes 6-0. Well, folks, that puts us at the end of our meeting. Our next meeting will be a study session on December 5, 2019. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
Okay. All those in favor, please raise your right hand and say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned.
Nay.
Oh, we got a nay. I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Okay. Please let the record show that Councilmember Buxton objects to adjournment, and we will leave the lights on for you.